Welcome, everybody. This is the December. Oh, hey, Dan. And welcome to our first election. Welcome, everyone. This is our December meeting of the Sustainable Bethel Commission.
I love seeing you. I feel like a big shot.
So our first item on the agenda is pledge allegiance to the flag. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where riches stands. One nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all. Great, thank you. Do we have any emails or anything? Or comments?
Billy Michael, forty-seven and a half weeks ago. There was a remarkable town meeting a couple of weeks ago. And we had the one dollar increase in this scrap program, the food scrap program. That was voted on, was it? Am I incorrect? Yeah, that was voted on. And, you know, we don't have numbers yet because it's, as Dan made very clear, and as a former first electman, Matt Knickerbocker, he talked a lot about it. But I am going to fulfill a vow to follow the money in this and just see what this costs. Because I just don't see how the government without subsidies, that this thing can work. I was at the dump after Thanksgiving and looking for evidence of people dumping food. Because that would be a good marker if we had a growth, we had a spike in food in that bin in the week after Thanksgiving when people had, everybody was eating crazy, as you all know. And anecdotally, I don't have the numbers. I don't have the numbers from. But if it bears out the anecdotal evidence, it'll be. I'm very reticent to support that program. And I don't, I just want to be on record throughout the pilot period that there was resistance to it. And as I always come in here, I see you, I know I can't speak once the meeting starts, but I know you're going for your sustainable Connecticut certification. I know the bronze certification, it tells the equity code for the town. And I've spoken at every meeting, I want to be on record. And especially given the timbre and tone of this town, we just had an election in November that was a real kick in the face to progressivism. We had only one Democrat on the progressive party of the town was elected by a number of votes. So I think the currents of thought in Bethel, as evidenced by an election like that, I've never seen that in my, I've been involved in politics since nineteen eighty-five, and I never saw a rout of one party like that. So I think the currents of thought are turning to more conservatism. And one other thing, I know you're involved with the transit oriented district and a sustainable Connecticut, not sustainable, the desegregated Connecticut. They had, I don't know if any of you attended that panel discussion with Louie Mark Corney, first electman of Bridgefield, and the mayor from Bloomfield. But when they talk about getting localities involved in climate change, like what are we going to do for climate change, it's a locale. And then the mayor from Bloomfield says, one of the biggest things is flooding. Flooding. And what are we going to do about flooding? And I have lived, my family's been on the same property for ninety-five years. I've been alive for seventy-two of those ninety-five years. The biggest climate change I've seen in my part of Bethel, the grassy plain, is flooding. But it's not because there's more rain, it's just because there's more building. There is no sponge left. At the end of my street, there's Hudson Glen. That used to be a twenty-five acre Christmas tree farm. It absorbs soil, it absorbs rain. Dolan Sand and Gravel Bank was all a huge sponge. Now you've got Robin Hill, Timber Oaks. So when, when climate change comes up to the, to commissions like yours, and they want, well, you've, you've created the flooding by the overdevelopment or by development. Correct, say overdevelopment. And the transit oriented district is going to bring more roof lines, gutters, and tar. More, so you're going to, you're going to be increasing flooding. You're going to make the climate change worse. So I did my monthly open mic.
He calls us open.
This is open mic.
Thank you, Billy. Cynthia McCorkin, Dylan, nineteen Elgin Avenue. So I had a couple of things. In regards to what Billy just said, I've been thinking about the food scraps too, and the whole idea of focusing on climate change in terms of, you know, what as a town we should be doing. It just seems to me that we're like way out here and we should be here, like looking at what's going on around us, which is there are people who are, you know, financially in bad shape, there are people that need resources. And I just think that it's not a question of being a climate change denier because climate is changing. But to, to what Billy said, it really is fundamentally more of a change of building. I mean, just purely simple, and our infrastructure can't sustain it either. So, you know, I think that we have to be very sage in how we approach that. The other thing that has been haunting me since you mentioned it is the, I think it was called the Repair Cafe, where people would come and bring their things to be repaired or learn how to. And it just, you know, I've just been thinking about that and I just can't imagine that in the, maybe in the fifties it would have been a great idea because we could have brought it to John Betalotti with the sewing machine shop, you know, he could fix anything. But that's, people would actually sit still for a couple of hours and learn how to repair a motor when they can just buy it on Amazon, which is what everybody does. We're not designed anymore as a culture to keep and maintain things. Although you do and I do, we do that just instinctively because that's how we, you know, live. But, you know, people aren't inclined to, to take on that. You know, they're too busy going on their devices and whatnot, and they're not going to sit still for that. So I don't even really understand that as a concept that could actually fly. But, yeah, that's all I have. Thanks.
Thank you, Cynthia. Anything else?
Would you want me to address any of those? You want, I can, the Repair Cafe, I can actually address both very quickly.
Oh, extra.
Because I'm, it's official what I'm asking.
Yeah, yes, I would like you to.
Remember that, I mean, food scraps in the Repair Cafe are all efforts to reduce the amount of waste that we're sending out to landfills outside of state Connecticut. And really, it's about the cost that we're all getting charged here in Connecticut for getting rid of it. And that's where that came from. And the idea was with the Repair Cafe, if you reuse some of that stuff, if you repair it, if you get people involved in that, maybe we're throwing away a little less. There's no, there's no money lost in that part of the effort. It's actually part, they're trying to save money. So whether it works or not, at least that, that is not going to cost us something. With respect to the food scraps, however, the food scraps is very much a taxpayer funded endeavor in the sense that we got a grant from the state. We had forty-two thousand dollars from the state. And with, with the idea that food scraps are the heaviest part of municipal waste. And if we're throwing that stuff out, because remember, we've lost one of our burned energy plants. So we're sending a ton of waste outside and it's actually costing our taxpayer and our residents a lot more money. So the idea of the food scrap is if we can divert that heaviest part of the waste, that's helpful. But to your point, we do want to make it self-sufficient. We are not there yet. Preliminary numbers, I mean, we've only had it since, I don't know, how many weeks now? I mean, I think we spent about eight hundred bucks to get rid of trash. We probably brought in about three hundred. But again, the program was growing. And for the program to reach permanency, because remember, it's pilot. And I'll, and I'll tell you, if it's not, if it's not feasible for us, there's not a benefit for our residents, we probably won't keep it going. And it doesn't make sense. What we're working now on is composting opportunities. We don't have to ship that stuff off at a cost. Yeah, that's right, you were there. Well, I don't think they were there. That's also kind of saying it kind of for everybody because food scraps, while not under your purview directly, it is very much a sustainable function and it's something that you're looking at. You know, and it's important that we're all together on this. I kind of want to put that out there because it's almost like a report to everybody where we stand. Right now, I mean, HRA, we're looking at doing something where we send it off to the Ridgefield or Newtown. Instead of paying, you know, curbside or whatever company to take that from us, you know, that's probably the only way it's going to be sustainable for us. Unless we're able to do our own composting or something, which we don't have as much space. They have bigger programs. And if we can, for, you know, basically I have archives, I just drive it over on the day off. There's one day where they're just driving. If we can deliver the food scraps there, they can put it in their process and we can get compost back for our residents. That's a win because a lot of our residents, you say you compost. I mean, we're trying to do that here too. We've talked about doing like composting glasses and stuff like that. But a lot of people find it very difficult to compost. So that is the goal. I mean, I assure you, we're, we're trying to make this money neutral. And we want it to be cost effective for the residents. It's the only reason we, you know, because we know that the fees we're paying out of state are enormous. And it's going to be a challenge. So I kind of wanted to put that out there with those two things.
I don't want to be out of order, but just briefly, that's a private enterprise that you're tapping into their profit.
What do you mean?
Well, food scraps, they're going to have less to pick up, the people that you paid to take away your trash.
Right. Why would, why would we want, I don't want to get into.
Well, I don't, we don't have a discussion, we can talk about that later, but I'm just saying.
Our, our goal, our goal from a municipal government standpoint, we're not the federal government. From a municipal government, what we do is there are certain things we step in that are good for everybody in town, where our goal is to operate them not for profit. Water system, yeah, this kind of. So I can't really be concerned about a company out in Wilford or whether or not we're taking money out of their pocket by not delivering to them.
Yeah, that's not my point.
Okay, that's right. Okay, sounds good. Thank you for going through.
Sure, and if you want to bring it up, something else under other business.
No, I was going to wait till you got to your business EV operation.
Okay, good, sure. Okay, so my commissioner report met with the first electman and you'll be doing, we have one vacancy. So hopefully we'll get that appointed in January.
It's the January second, it's the plan.
I want to just briefly talk about Sustainable Connecticut, the certification. I know it's on the agenda tonight. Tia is not here, she's not feeling well, so I'm just going to quickly say something and then you can talk about the walk on it later. I did have a meeting with Inez Ortiz, who is the program assistant who's been assigned to Sustainable Bethel to assist us. She helped clarify a lot of the requirements because I know it's quite confusing. And she did also say that some of the criteria will be changing in twenty twenty-four. So we'll get that information, right? So kind of like any organization, they look at their stuff and evaluate. I did suggest that she participate in the planning committee in January. So when I talked to Tia before, yeah, so she'll have to schedule that meeting in January. And I said, it's, you know, if it makes sense, I think it might be helpful to have her there at the planning committee meeting, you know, to answer any questions. I also met with one of the board members of Bethel Lars. They are, they are moving forward with the community match grant that we spoke about in twenty twenty-four. So that will be great for Bethel and any other initiative that Bethel may have, whether it be a nonprofit, an individual. It was also clarified that a municipality can also put forward an initiative, but the funding has to come from fundraising or a crowdsourced. And then they'll match that up to two thousand dollars. So one of the things that you had talked about, Gabriella, was something with Parks and Rec. So that's a possibility. They clarified that, if that's something that the town would like to do as well. And then Gabriella will talk about later the, what's going on with the walk audit because we'll ramp that up and start planning that in twenty twenty-four. Talk about the EV chargers on the agenda. Also want to bring up about solar energy, which is a renewable energy. I was approached, again, by the Pace Group, which is the People's Action for Clean Energy, about the programs that state of Connecticut has now with solar energy. And Sunny and I spoke about that, so she's going to be helping with that. Whether the town of Bethel would like to expand solar farm to different buildings, Board of Ed or the municipal building expands solar panels on some of the parking lots is a possibility. So we'll, we'll look at that, we'll talk to them, we're going to talk to them this week about opportunities and we'll share that with the first electman's office. So that's happening as well. Now, for me, no, that's what I got. Any questions for the commissioners? No, okay. All right, so I would like a motion to consideration of approval in November fifteen, twenty twenty-three minutes.
Motion. What's?
It's for the minutes to approve.
Yeah, but like, what's the phrase I'm supposed to say?
Motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second? All in favor?
Hi.
I, thank you, okay. All right, on the planning committee report, Tia is not here. Like I said, we are going to have a meeting in January and will continue to advance the Sustainable Connecticut certification. Did you want to say?
So just general update for the Sustainable Connecticut application. I completely finished reading the P O C D and highlighting things that are relevant for the different categories. So I will start populating the categories we've already discussed, like the energy and the, all the different things where it's applicable. And hopefully I will be able to, you know, indicate pages since each category is read by different experts. I think having the, all the supporting documentation in each category. You know, point thing. So that we can get all the, all the necessary.
Action categories.
Yeah, thank you, action categories. Okay. So that's that, so that's moving forward. I spoke to Megan, who is the town social worker, wanting to touch base with her about potentially connecting for the Community Match Fund with different departments. And she was unsure how to help me. So her suggestion was to potentially join in a department's head meeting to basically just give a rundown of the Community Match Fund and sort of the, the general parameters that we understand so that people can make sense of, of that information. And if it's something that they're working on within the department that they can reach out. I reached out to Megan initially because I figured she would know of any major needs in the town. But she wasn't too, she didn't think of anything sustainable wise that lined up with the Sustainable Connecticut categories. So that was her suggestion. So I wanted to check in with everybody here and, and again, then check in with Dan about potentially joining at some point that makes sense for them. Again, just a quick sharing of the guidelines that they've shared with us already and the different ongoing community match funds that are open on their site so that people get, get a sense of what types of programs can be supplemented with these additional funds. So that's, I plan on talking to Dan about that at some point.
We'll talk to him.
Yeah. And other than that, for the walk audit itself, I was also reading through all of the materials in the Walk Audit A R P Toolkit. And it's really informative, it gets a lot of sort of how-tos, checklist and everything like that. There are some questions that came up for me, just in terms of, are we going to print these out? You know, where's our checkpoint going to be? Are we going to do a single location versus a route? So I think those require a lot more discussion so that we can put that in the agenda for the next.
So what, what my suggestion is, because you're going to be working with Kelly on that. So the two of you need to kind of get together and then we can figure something out at the planning committee. Just talk amongst yourselves. And, you know, and let me know. I mean, I'm happy to participate if I can. But I think that's something that, you know, come up with your list of questions and some suggestions and then bring it back to the planning committee and then the full commission on where we go. But the suggestion from Janice, who also spoke to Beth, was to go to do a walking audit in the Route Six area because the downtown area is also, they already have a walk audit done, which I shared with you and Tia.
Yeah.
Yeah, because I got that from Janice.
I mean, right, in the Route Six corridor, where, if, and where we're going to focus. There's just a bunch of different ideas that I have in terms of how to be able to do that because certain organizations that are there may want to do something specifically to sort of their access point. People walking may do a whole route. You know, I, I think there's a lot of different ways that we can connect with the community and the different groups that access that whole area. So, okay.
Right, I think the walk audit that they did for the downtown area, and they followed some of the A R P, but there was, they did some other, but they involved a lot of people. And this was in twenty twenty-two. So I thought it was pretty comprehensive. And, you know, maybe we can use it as a guide, as part of what we're doing, you know? The initial thought was to do the walk audit between Big Y and where the assisted living is.
Okay.
You know, I mean, you don't want it to be like a mile because people aren't, you're going to, I mean, we're going to engage some of the seniors, some, like it may be ability beyond, you know what I'm saying? So have, but, you know, and then you can check off those areas. Anyway, that, that was one of the suggestions because most of the stuff is like there.
Can I, can I make a comment?
Oh, absolutely, yes.
With, with that in mind, yes, that is a very good area to look at because there are some things we'll have to think about. From where all the condos have been built down in front of Mount Laurel Plaza, you know, we're going to need a sidewalk there to work with the owner. There's not a crosswalk yet from that corner across to the, like the Big Y side. So that's to look at. There's a lot of folks, a lot of foot track because of Bethel Baseball and Mitchell Park. And, you know, the town actually owns a piece of land directly across, which may be for, for parking someday. So you might look at all that area, like, like she said, and, and just give your advice and what you come up with. Is it something that we're going to have to look at? Because there's a lot of building too, other businesses. And eventually it'll be something, well, right now, Whole Andy was for sale. It looks like they're going to hold on to it for a while. And there was a, there was a move to try to put some more buildings there. And it was that kind of went up in smoke. So right now they're going to hold on, it looks like Whole Andy will be the same thing for a while. So anyway, that area is, is super bright for a lot more effort, a lot more walking around. I'm going to try to do some things with Mitchell Park down the road. Bethel Baseball Association is interested in, you know, they pay for a lot of that stuff. We're talking about putting in some bathrooms there. So there's a lot going on in that spot. So if you can.
Absolutely, yeah.
Right, so whatever we come up with will inform the town to help them advance whatever initiatives and vision that they have.
And I guess that was the other idea I was having, that when we do narrow down where exactly, you know, start save the date, advertising, asking for volunteers and all that stuff so that the work can get out and as many people with as many different walking abilities can join in.
Yeah, absolutely, that's cool.
Yeah, and just to add a little bit, I was at the meeting where the food scrap program was sort of up for debate. And I, I, I basically just made a public comment in regards to myself as a resident, but also as part of the Sustainable Bethel Commission in support of the food program, food scrap program, pilot program. And one of the things that I heard from a resident there, and then we talked a little bit more after, is Woo Post. So in Worcester, Massachusetts, they have their own composting situation program that is underway, that they compost it right there in town. And then people can come grab the compost later on in the year and all that stuff. So I am planning to gather some information from the, you know, Woo Post program and sending that along to the food scrap people so that they're fully aware of any sort of resources or potential models or, you know, just reaching out potentially so that, you know, hopefully we can have that be a success for the residents. And I think that is it for now. Oh, the Bethel, the Bethel Land Trust fundraiser at Brooklyn Cemetery was pretty successful. So thank you for sharing that flyer out to the contact list because.
Oh, good.
It helped add a little bit, you know, more people.
Did they make enough money for a tree, for the trees that were?
So, yeah, he said that it was successful and that's going to definitely help sort of fund those replantings.
Oh, that's great, that's all right, okay. So, yeah, so let me know, you know, when you and Kelly get together.
Okay.
That'd be great. Anything else?
I think that's it.
Okay. All right. All right, so, you. How's it going?
I spoke to somebody at Bethel Pride to kind of ask them about, oh, sorry, Earth Day planning. I'm kind of slowly going there, Earth Day planning for next year. It looks like April twentieth is a good date for our Earth Day celebration. And I, so I liked kind of Bethel's Pride's process when they organized their event last year where they had kind of a sign up form. And then they had a very thorough email that they sent out to everybody. And so I kind of saved that. And I, I reached out to see if I could talk to someone about any tips that they have. And I talked to her the other day and got a lot of good tips. And I just want to be more, I just want to incorporate more businesses, more, you know, I want to share this forum so that people can say, I want to be there, I want to be a booth and involved. And I figured a good feeler, we could bring up the Repair Cafe on that forum. Where you say, would you be interested in offering free repair services? What items would it be? I don't, I've talked to you already, but I don't think that we're going to have a full Repair Cafe because it's after learning more about the amount of work that goes into it. We were told that first you have to get the vendors. And then they kind of, was it Wilson?
There was, yeah, Will and Go Green.
Yeah, they use a. A scheduling system so people can pre-book their time. And then they said to keep people in one place so they could tell them it was their time, they set up like a refreshment stand so that they could find the people. So it's just a lot to incorporate into Earth Day. But I do want to make it maybe one, one repair, one person or one booth. And then try to get the word out for more of a larger Repair Cafe.
Yeah.
I got a lot of information and connections from Bethel Land Trust for category three on, on Sustainable Connecticut. And, sorry, I'm still just kind of looking through, looking through. And I haven't touched base with them yet, just to say, I got it. And I will let you know if I have any questions so far.
Okay, that's great.
Yep.
Awesome, so April twentieth.
April twentieth, yeah.
Well, let everybody know.
I figure I can announce, announce it in the new year, like, hey, you know, New Year's resolutions.
Absolutely, and Dale put in his Friday afternoon newsletter and then it'll be blasted all over the place.
I have a question, but not a question, more of a comment, something you've been thinking about. Something was brought up last year about the possibility of planting a tree over at the education complex in honor of Larry Crevis. As you know, Larry Crevis, maybe, maybe you don't know, was a board of education member, did a lot for the town for many, many years. I know that there's some folks from the Keystone Club or whatever school might be interested in participating, but it could be something very good to do around Earth Day. And, you know, if that's something you're interested in working on as a group, then that's fantastic. I'll work with you and make, you know, the connections. But it could be, it could be really something that's nice, sustainable.
Do they want the tree at, on a school campus?
We're looking at doing it on a school campus. We haven't had a position yet. We know that, you know, the leadership of the schools are very interested. And he was, he was a great contributor to the town. He helped to gift cottage over here in St. James's. It was just something, you know, it kind of came up last year or something like, you know, nice to be around Earth Day. And we're just getting it off the ground at that point. But if it's something you could kind of push along and be a nice project.
Yeah.
Okay, so we can, we'll follow up afterwards.
Yeah, let's do that for sure. Yeah, why more work issue, well, we're all working with B L T, so absolutely, I think it makes sense. And you have like some kind of dedication or whatever, right?
Yeah, yeah, it'll be something for the community.
That's great.
Yeah, so I just kind of want to throw that out. I'll get back to you on a couple of things with Bethel Land Trust. If they're looking to do a couple of things with respect to the, the trail over by McPower.
Right.
The one with the, like the boardwalk trail. They're looking at making some repairs, maybe more ADA compliant. And a trail grant just showed up through cost. So I don't know if it's something that they're interested to do about, I'll pass it your way. Let you welcome that, that's all right.
That'd be great.
Sure.
Okay. Anything else? Yeah, we're, I know I got a. Yeah, we're only, I, I know I got a sequence here, but I figured at the end we can talk about that other thing, right? You, Sunny?
Yeah, my end, I've signed up to work on certification, so I guess I'll do all of that. I have access to it.
Okay, that's right, yeah.
And then the second thing with the pace tomorrow, we're going to be getting on a call, so I was involved with it earlier. But I had a conflict of interest with my day job, so I had to step out. Earlier, when I'm out of my job, so I can get back to this, that's it. Here I am, so I'll step that up. And I had worked on the earlier solar program as well. We bought over 30 stores then in town. And I understand, yes, the proposals that I come up with, Adam had discussed with you with regards to the freeze blocking for a change sunlight. And if you can, I understand the utilities have to put some money back to the community as part of the charter. So if we can work something out, one of the biggest blockers for green energy is the past, the geothermal solar for residents is a huge cost. So anything that can be provided as some kind of support is what I was looking at. So I put together a proposal and run it by the committee and the community.
All right, so we, we do want to, Dan had brought to my attention that he's looking into EV charging stations and asked the Sustainable Bethel Commission to report back on opportunities that the first selectmen and selectmen in the town can use as related to locations, demographics, density, what type of charger, whether to charge or not to charge. So, did you want to?
Sure, sure.
And Peter Schickman is going to be working with me, and I can probably take the lead, so that's his background.
Okay, so, you know, so obviously the way this started was, you know, last year when I, when I was elected to special, you know, I started kind of looking at, we had two EV chargers in town, both with two ports each, one located over Depot, one out the, the new train station. And, you know, there's been a lot of, I'd say a lot of controversy, especially about the one at Depot, because of where the businesses are, and it took up two prime spots. And, and it was, it was designed in such a way that we were giving away free electricity for a period of time. As you recall, when those were put in, it was a program where it's kind of on build financing, where they, they built the two chargers, they installed them, and they got them from a grant from the state. And what we did, or our part, was to basically give away free electricity for three years. And then it was supposed to be not-for-profit for the life of the unit. Unfortunately, what I discovered was, you know, that thing was put in around 2014, in 2017, and they never started charging for electricity. It was just kind of like off the map. So, so last, I guess it was September, you know, kind of discovered all this was going on. We were going to get a whole charge point, which was a company we're in, we're now charging for electricity. Of course, it's at a reduced rate, which is nice compared to what they paid other chargers, because we don't have a big problem. We just have to break even. So we, we charge 22 cents a kilowatt hour. That covers what we pay as a town, and that covers the maintenance on the two units of the, and I would say the annual subscription on those two units. Now, with that, I mean, with EV charging in general, it's kind of been a thing that there aren't enough chargers. Part of it is because we have about 35% of our population downtown are renters. So they can't go install a charger in their home. So the question is, you know, should we take advantage of the opportunity? Right now, there's money out there from state grants to increase our EV charging infrastructure. It helps with the Sustainable Certification Act, but I think by and large, we have an appetite in town for more EV charging opportunities, whether you like it or not. And I'll be honest, I've done on the record, I'm actually not a big EV car fan. I really think we should be looking at hydrogen, but it is what it is, and EVs have moved so much further, you know, in study and battery or whatever. But I think it's probably a good idea for the community, there are opportunities out there. So with that, you know, I've been kind of talking to some folks about what it would take, how do you get started? And, you know, likely what you would do is find a couple of companies out there that can come around and help you find what's available, or what's, you know, where we can actually put them in town. You can work on, you know, locations, I know the schools are all very interested in having them. We probably should put some out behind the municipal center. Certainly would not put any more downtown at Depot, you know, unless it's a fast charger, still people in and out. But there are a couple of companies out there I've talked to that will come in, you know, do all the work for free. And, but of course, their goal is to help us find the grant money and get, you know, their, their funding from the grant. So I'm going to put it in your hands, you know, as a project, you know, and come back and you'll advise or selectmen what you think. And I'll, I'll certainly give you a couple of the names I've had so far, but it'll be, your, your colleague Peter Schickman knows places as well.
We both have, yeah, vendor partners, or we know people, so.
Sure, I mean, I, I mean, I would ask kind of, you know, consider some of the big picture, you know, obviously, you know, what kind of charger we're getting, what they, what they do. If you can shop Connecticut, that's always great, but, but only if it's, you know, again, at the end of the day, it's still taxpayer dollars, even if it's not ours. It's, you know, these big grants are funded by, you know, the State of Connecticut, they're still taxpayer money. So spend it wisely, even though it's not Bethel directly. And my philosophy's always been, if there's grant money, grab it, because you otherwise are going to give it to another town. And the other part is, you know, there will be some, obviously some matching, you know, from the town, most grants. But, you know, we want to keep that reasonable. So if you come up with a couple of ideas, a couple of plans, you know, where it should be. And the other piece of this too is, there's always opportunity for private public partnership. Maybe consider the, the few grocery stores. You know, we have Carol Lucy's on one end, we have a grocery store down near, across from Sycamore. We have Big Y, and we don't have any proper property up in Stoney Hill really for chargers. So if there's something we can do with them that's beneficial, they may be very interested in it, you know, participating, it may be cost neutral for us, because it would be good for them, you know what I mean? So I, I would encourage you just to look at all the options available.
That's the plan. That's it, Peter, we're meeting next week, I believe, to start the process.
I, I have a question before we're on this. Do, in the sustainable criteria, do arts count for a lot, do they?
There's a, there's a, yes, there's arts categories. Yeah, it's like historical preservation, there's different categories, but ultimately, community engagements.
Yeah.
It is its own category, actually. Yes, culture and arts.
Yeah, a lot has come up recently about trying to find gallery space in town. It's very hard for a gallery to make it, because unless we're a destination. The bottom line is, there's a huge economic impact with arts. Studies have shown dramatically that, in fact, in Fairfield County, that the art scenes and things like that do provide a lot of traffic for other businesses in town. So I've got some ideas kind of swirling around in my head about that, about project. So as I get something a little more firm, I'll, I'll come back to the mission.
Yeah, I mean, there's a whole category called vibrant creative cultural ecosystems. I've talked to Janice several times about this, so we're working together on all of that. And she has a lot of this already.
Yeah.
You know, and the points can be up to 20 points per subcategory, depending on what it is.
Yeah, well, I, I'll just say, I floated an idea by Janice today. So probably some of us are familiar with Bryant Park down in New York City. Bryant Park is a cool little place that it goes to, but part of that whole thing is they have these little shops. The kiosks, and the kiosks themselves are unique down there, because they're, they're all weather and all that. They're not, they're not like these big buildings or anything. So one of the things I talked to Janice about, it's a possibility of creating an art stop. The idea with art stop would be, we would put kiosks similar to what's down there. Actually, I talked to the president, well, I emailed back and forth with the president of Bryant Park about those kiosks. And the idea would be, if we could have some of those around at the train station, that on a weekly, weekend basis, we could have an art stop and try to draw people into town on the train from other places. And it would be one of those places where some of our artists can, you know, do the gallery stuff. You could have people selling jewelry, it'd kind of be a little Mecca, and it's close enough to downtown, that, you know, downtown would benefit from.
They're like little pop-ups, but with kiosks.
Yeah, they're kiosks, and the ones they have now, almost like, look like these little long, like long buildings. Like somebody wants to maybe do containers, but containers will look ugly. But that, that concept might be something that would, at least we could look at. Because, again, there, there are opportunities out there where, you know, we could break even as a town, you know, by, by renting those little units out for folks.
But there's a big Community Match Grant related to that as well.
That's why I'm going to mention it too, because you, you mentioned it earlier, and you've been fundraising for it.
Absolutely, and you do it through Bethel Arts too, that could be part of what they do as well.
Yeah, but it could be, it could be something viable downtown that brings in business, you know, brings in whatever, because we just don't have a place for that, except for the, like the weekend craft fairs. And it's, and it's kind of out of the way enough that, you know, it's space that's not really utilized during the weekend so much.
So come up also, thank you for putting the survey at the hundred plus four.
Yeah, great.
No, I like that.
If some of you guys are thinking about that, I could something to work on with Janice.
Yeah.
To see if it's feasible, right? You don't, you don't know if you don't go, or you don't get fish, you don't.
No, no, you have to kind of see what's, what's going on, but yeah, I love that idea, I think that'd be awesome. And the whole idea of bringing people on the train to stop here, and then the art stop, then you'd have a spin-off economies of people just walking around the town and going to restaurants, going to the stores, right?
While they wait an hour for the next train.
Well, while they wait an hour for the next train.
This is like we talked about downtown, you know, I've never, I've never been thrilled with changing that industrial zone to residential. So to the extent that we can look at that and create a destination for people to come to Bethel on train.
I try.
It's like review, it's like reverse engineering the TOE.
Yep, yep.
And we're doing it in a way that now it's sustainable for us, because, you know, our stools are packed. You know, we're nervous about how fast we're growing, Route 6 is growing like crazy. So if we can create downtown and use that Mecca where we're driving people in every day, to have that destination, it can be a boom for us, if we create more business. Anything that fits in that world, I think is good.
Oh, absolutely. I'll worry tell to Janice about it, for sure. Because we talk all the time about all the other stuff that she's doing. That's great, I love that. Is there anything else, Dan?
That's it for me.
Okay, are you sure?
Yeah.
All right, a lot going on. Does any, I, I don't have anything else, does anybody else have anything else?
Yeah, this is something I'll call the, the two and Jax.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, we'll work on that for sure. Yeah, we, so we have a lot going on for starting in 2024. We're going to be moving fast. All right, so if there's no other business, our next meeting is Wednesday, January 17th. Our route is going to be, we're going to be using downstairs, right? So we have conference room A, which is great, not that we can't climb the stairs, I mean, it's probably good for you, but that's okay. All right, so do I hear a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second? All in favor? All right.
Thank you. Thank you for coming.
Oh, you're welcome.